Begin with a roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Here.
Mr. Mills?
Here.
Mr. Oden?
Here.
Ms. Ralspergen?
Here.
Mr. Kleindt's absent.
Please stand for the flag salute. I'll ask Mr. Oden to lead us, please.
Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our invocation this evening is by the Palm Springs Church of Praise Pastor Michael DeVilla.
Aye.
Let's bow our heads at this time. As Psalm says, "I will lift my eyes unto the hills from whence coming my help, my help coming from the Lord who gives me strength." This time, dear heavenly Father, we come before you, Lord, to exalt you and to magnify your holy name, because you are God. We come before you, Lord, right now in front of this committee, and we pray that all that are in this panel, all that are in this committee, Father God, that you would bless in wisdom and understanding in all that needs to be done, from our mayor, Will, to Mrs. Hodges, to Mr. Oden, to Mr. Mills. And we pray that each and every one of us together, Father, we ask that you give us the strength and understanding and the wisdom to move forward as a community together. And we pray for all those that are in service of our community. We pray for the fire department, the police department, the hospitals, and those that are all in service in our community. We ask for mercy over their lives and over our leaders of our town, Father. We also pray for our nation at this time, that we hear rumors of war with Iraq, and we pray for mercy upon all these things at this present moment, because you are our God. And we come before you right now as a community together, and we ask for wisdom in all that needs to be done in all decisions of our town as we move forward together as Palm Springs. And at this present moment, we honor you at this present time. Thank you for this moment, and we honor you and glorify your holy name. Amen.
Thank you. And at this time, we will have the presentation of the swearing-in of our new police officer and our chief, Gary Jiedren, please.
Mayor members of city council, I'd like to introduce to you our newest police officer, Anthony Palutic. Anthony is recently a graduate from Palomar College Police Academy. He also just recently turned 21. Boy, do I feel old. He comes to us as an entry-level police officer. He is from Oceanside, but as of last week, he is now a resident of Palm Springs. Tonight in the audience is his mother, Patricia Anton, his father, Anthony Palutic, his uncle, Dr. Walter Palutic, and his grandmother, Elena Melzey. Anthony, if you could face me and raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Anthony Palutic.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States
Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of California
Constitution of the State of California.
against all enemies,
against all enemies.
foreign and domestic,
foreign and domestic.
that I will bear true faith
that I will bear true faith.
and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States
and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
and to the Constitution of the State of California
and to the Constitution of the State of California.
and I take this obligation freely
and I take this obligation freely.
without any mental reservation
without any mental reservation.
or purpose of evasion
or purpose of evasion.
and that I will well
and I will well.
and faithfully discharge
and faithfully discharge.
the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you. Anthony Palutic. As with our custom, we're going to briefly go back over to the police department and welcome the new member to the department, and I'll be back.
And as our custom, we won't be able to attend. But it has nothing to do with you. Congratulations, and to your family. I know you're very proud. Twenty-one. There is one more presentation that we have tonight. I would ask Mr. Smoot to introduce the new federal security director for our airport. Mr. Smoot, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. It is indeed my pleasure to introduce to the council tonight, Tom, you want to come on up? Thomas Anthony, who is the federal security director for the Palm Springs Airport. He's also the federal security director for Yuma and El Central, which he visited today, I believe. And we are very excited to have Tom here. He is part of the federalization process that followed the tragic events of September 11th of last year and is here responsible for the screening operation at our airport. And we're truly excited to have him here because he has 20 years-plus experience with the FAA. A lot of airports were blessed with federal security directors that didn't know much about airports, and so we're very pleased to have Tom here. So, Tom, you may want to say a couple words to the council.
Thank you, Alan. And, Madam Mayor, and council members, thank you for the invitation to address you this evening. It's an honor to be here. It's a pleasure to be here, and it's an honor to represent our new organization, the TSA. As Alan said, while this is a new organization and it is a new, this is a whole new job description. There were no federal security directors before. I have had the opportunity to work for 22 years in the FAA, both in the security field and in the air traffic field. And before I came out here, I consulted with a couple of my associates and told them I was coming to Palm Springs, and they said, "Oh, good. You're going to enjoy working with them. It's a very professionally-run operation out there." And indeed, that's what I've found to be, very professional, very forward-thinking, and innovative, and so it's a pleasure to be here. Indeed, it's a pleasure to meet with the airport management and the leaders of the fire department, the police department, and now yourselves. We are the first, we have a first here, even though we started a little bit later than some airports, we are the first airport in the western United States to have our checkpoints fully reconfigured according to new federal standard. We are federalized with a federal workforce, and we will continue to essentially roll out to the baggage screening operation, which we have not implemented yet. And indeed, the third correction, the fourth and final stage, will be for the integration of some federal law enforcement support at this airport. So, it's a pleasure to be here, and if you have any questions, I'm certainly open to any.
Thank you. Thank you. Counsel, anyone have a question? Just a welcome. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Glad to be here.
All right. Security, security we're talking about tonight. Madam Clerk, report of posting of the agenda, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor. The agenda you had before you was posted in accordance with council procedures last Friday.
Thank you. And Mr. Alshire, closed session report, please.
Yes, Councilmember, closed session. Of the items listed on your closed session agenda, we discussed real property negotiations with the tribe concerning the spa and casino projects. We gave staff report, no action was taken. We discussed real property negotiations with the Burnett Companies concerning their project. We gave a staff report, no action was taken. The real property item involving Bill Barron and J.B. Gold were not discussed. We discussed real property negotiations involving the visitor's center. We gave a staff report, no action was taken. We did not discuss the real property negotiations involving the convention center or the golf course hotel. We did not discuss the Desert Water Agency litigation. We discussed exposure to litigation in one case. No action was taken. We did not discuss initiation of litigation. We did not discuss the city attorney evaluation.
Thank you. The housing authority, the industrial development authority, and the financing authority have no business tonight. We will adjourn as a city council and convene as a community redevelopment agency. I now need a motion for approval of the minutes of July 3rd, 17th, 24th, August 21st, September 4th, and September 18th, 2002, please.
It's been moved.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr.?
I will second that with an abstention for September 18th.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I need to abstain on August 21st. I was at prison.
And, Madam Clerk, I need to abstain on July 3rd. Right, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Okay. Public hearings, there are none. Public comments? This is for the agency. Anyone wishing to make public comments for the agency? You have three minutes. The redevelopment agency? Okay. There'll be another opportunity, okay? All right, under the legislative items, item A is the County of Riverside pass-through agreement. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. This agreement is our pass-through amendment with the County of Riverside regarding the methodology on our merged projects. This agreement is being, it's clarifying the old language that we had. It actually is to our benefit and allows us to actually realize more dollars for our use. John Raymond from Community Economic Development can answer any specific questions that you have regarding the details on this measure. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I won't go into, it's a long report, so I won't go into a lot of the details, but essentially, when the project area is created back in 1988, '89, as part of all redevelopment project areas, you negotiate pass-through agreements with all the other taxing agencies, including, in this case, Riverside County. There was language in the original agreement that had two triggers. The county and the agency negotiated an agreement where the agency would get more of the cash flow up front in order to facilitate more development and therefore more redevelopment and more tax increment. And there were two triggers. One was an annual, the formula changed when the tax increment reached $3 million annually. And there was another trigger when it reached $4.2 million in deferred pass-through payments to the county. The county gets the money before we do, so therefore, they have to interpret the agreement more than we do. And there was some confusion in the way the agreement was written in that the word "annual" and "cumulative" were kind of used interchangeably. Obviously, they're very different. That mistake was not to our favor, and I think Tom Canaro actually found, realized that, notified the county that we'd like to change it. Counties agreed. The Board of Supervisors approved this last week, and what it does is it does clarify that language. We'll get $157,000 more in cash flow this year, and annually over the next 12 years, about another $288,000 a year in tax increment in this one project area over those years. And then, it starts being reduced at that point, once we hit, that's when we're estimated to hit those triggers. So, it's a very good, it's a very good agreement for us. It's a very good amendment to the agreement, and it clarifies things in our favor. So, if you have any questions, I think Tom would be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Well, counsel, you have any questions?
Madam Mayor, I have no questions. I'll move the resolution.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Madam Chairman?
Aye. Thank you. Next is the Prairie Schooner parcel. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. On the staff report on this, I would just like to note a couple things. The tribe, as you know, is in the process of building their new casino downtown. As part of that, they had made a request to use the Prairie Schooner, our property, adjacent to that area for their construction, for their construction vehicles and things of that nature. Through some negotiations, we have come up with this license agreement, which is before you. It essentially allows them to use the land for 15 months. The value we will receive from that is that they will do improvements to that land in terms of the undergrounding and things that are there now, the improvements. In essence, they will leave that parcel in 15 months, $75,000 enhanced more. It's about $5,000 a month in value. One thing we would like to add is, what's not in the resolution, we're requesting that you agree to a provision, that we will add to a provision, that it can be extended with the agreement of both parties. With that, Madam Mayor, we would request counsel approve this license agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel?
I think the one other thing we want to note is that we have distributed a revised draft of the license agreement, which has a number of changes to it, and to those revisions, we would add the revision that the tribe has requested.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I will move the resolution with the amended recommendations by the city attorney.
Second with discussion. Mr. Alshire, in that portion, we talked about concerning the way the site's left after the terms of the agreement. We talked about potentially putting a clause in to allow the city to determine whether or not they would like to keep the gravel covering or not.
Yes, thank you for noting that. I should have noted that we will include that revision, which would basically provide that at the option, some of the improvements they're making is to provide gravel, and we would provide that at the city's option, that will either be removed or stay.
All right. Roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Madam Chairwoman?
Aye. All right, our next item is the Education Revenue Augmentation Fund. Jeff report, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council, this is a budget resolution before you. Comes to us via the state. This is shifting some of our revenue from the merged areas. It's $130,751. It's required for us to send that back to the state, which is distributed to the schools K through nine. If council does not do this, if the city does not comply, ultimately, it will just be deducted from our property tax. We are recommending your approval. Thank you.
I'll move the resolution.
I'll second it, Madam Chairwoman.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor?
May I say something?
Sorry, I was too fast.
Well, I think it's important to note, because this is only the first part
Yes.
of what's going to happen with the state of California not being in compliance budget-wise. They're now starting to take from us
Again.
again. And this is what they did in the early '90s, and they're going to do it now so that they can balance their budget on the backs of all of us. And this is $130,751, so this is their first payment. So, watch out, because there's more to come within the next year.
And we have no option. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 opposed? Next item is the purchase of 6.2 acres from the city of Palm Springs. Staff report, please.
Thank you, members of council. This is, of course, a purchase from the agency, to the agency from the city, and I would ask Mr. Raymond, our Director of Economic Development, to give you the details on this land purchase. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, back on July 3rd, when, I guess, you weren't here, the agency approved a DDA, a disposition development agreement with Sunset Hacienda Partners for the expansion of Coyote Run on six and a quarter acres of what was city-owned land. The DDA was with the agency, so we had to convey the land from the city to the agency. At the July 10th meeting, the city council approved that purchase and sale agreement. We do it on an agreement, just like buying and selling between any two parties, but the other half of that agreement, the agency approval, has not come forward until now. So, this is just the other half of the agreement that you have already approved as a city council. The sum is, for the sum of $250,000. The redevelopment agency, the low-modding housing fund would own the land and contribute it when the expansion of Coyote Run gets funded, contribute that to the project and in order to facilitate that project. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
How many new low, moderate-income housing would that create within the city, Mr. Raymond?
That would be 68 new apartment units. Next, a very, very excellent project.
Counsel?
Madam Mayor, no comment other than this is a good project, so I'll move the two resolutions.
I'll second them.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Madam Chairwoman?
Aye. We will now adjourn as a community redevelopment agency and reconvene as a city council. With that, we will move into public comments. This gives you an opportunity to come to the mic, please. State your name and address, and you have three minutes, and I'll see if I can remember how to work this. Jerry Betts? If I don't have a card for you, please.
My name's Jerry Betts. I'm a constituent of Palm Springs, and I want to make some comments on the up-and-coming election and the way it's being handled. I noticed on the arcade out front that says, "The people are the city." And you people as council members are charged with the responsibility of watching out for we constituents, for our protection, our welfare. I don't think that's happening. I understand what this is all about. First of all, I want to say what I don't understand. I don't understand how a city of 42,000 people named Palm Springs can be right next door to a city of 42,000 named Cathedral City, and one city can have a budget that is more than double the other. And the one that has the budget that's more than double the other says, "We can't accommodate any cuts in our budget." Now, I understand, there's things I understand I don't understand. I do understand this. This started getting widespread publicity just recently, and I can understand this. This is paid for, sponsored, and put together and distributed by people who do feed at the city trough. I can understand them wanting to protect their rights that they've won over a long period of time. I can understand that. I cannot understand this, which we all received in the mail. I can't understand how you people in good conscience could expend $125,000 plus to put out an informational piece. Now, this is called in the press, "an informational piece." I don't think anyone in their right mind could call this "an informational piece." When you people depended on city staff to put together the scare tactics on how the $6 million would be cut if it happened, what did you expect? We're going to cut the paramedic corps. Are there any senior citizens in Palm Springs that might be concerned about the paramedics being done away with? We're going to cut police officers. We're going to cut fire protection. We're going to close some of the parks at night. We're going to let the lawns get brown. What would a group of citizens have said if they had the ability to sit down with you and let's hammer out, "How can we cut $6 million?" with you, and let's hammer out, "How can we cut six million dollars and not do this scare tactic thing?" Anybody that reads this and believes the scare tactics in here, they're not gonna go against what you people said. I just don't think it's right that this kind of money could be spent to sway the vote of the constituents of Palm Springs, in the way that it's being aimed at. I, I, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Betts.
My name's Mark Timbrell, I'm a new resident of Palm Springs, I live at fourteen-ninety North Palm Canyon, and this is my opinion. I've got eleven-year history with this town, in and out, working around it, now I live in it. Speaking from a working man's point of view, it's starting to suck. Excuse the language, couldn't think of a better word. Now, not only has Palm Springs City Council led its residents to create a place that's entirely reliant upon tourism, then managed to make it so selective, the working-class person here is hard-pressed to find a reason to stay on, without any concern being shown for their interests, wants, needs, and economic situation. This is your fault. The fallout is already very evident, these are people you can't do without, these are service people, service industry people. You can't do without them. They're like me, I'm sure, I just want to live here, in this part of the desert, in this environment, and this town, but mainly this environment, this beautiful environment we have, and want to be in this particular city. All I want is to be able to make a living along with a lot of these people. And the object is for us all to take care of whoever wants to come to this town, to spend money and enjoy the environment with us, with me, with you. Spend money and enjoy our environment, right? Anybody. I wouldn't be able to cover everything that I'm concerned with in this three minutes that you give, that we have. So, I'll be back. After this fiasco of a weekend, this last weekend fiasco, economically and emotionally on a lot of these people, you've definitely got my attention. It's not my, I have only one agenda here, and that's to be able to sleep tonight, knowing that you've been told. I also have an M on my license, and that means motorcycle rider, not monster on two wheels. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming down.
My name is Sylvia Zelnis, better known as Sly. I am a resident of Palm Springs, a management consultant and a local business owner. You know me as a member of the Human Rights Commission, I am also chair-elect of the Professionals and Human Resources Association, and a board member of our Palm Springs Desert Communities Chapter of PFLAG. I mention the hats I wear to demonstrate that I am an active, involved citizen and contributor to this community. I am happy to say that Palm Springs is the only place I have ever lived, where, no matter where I go, I can't wait to get home. It's for these reasons that I encourage citizens of Palm Springs to vote yes on measures U, V, W, and X. Because I want Palm Springs to continue to be the premier city that defines this beautiful valley, and I want our city to be the best. As a public sector manager for twenty years, and a consultant to government for five years, I'm very familiar with budget-cutting 101. Always go for the juggler, hit the programs and services most visible, most valued to the citizens, and that's exactly what happened here. Cut police and fire, cut paramedics, cut the dare program, cancel the skate park, which, incidentally, is specifically preserved by voting yes on measure V. Unfortunately, this tactic, while often effective for the city at the polls, only serves to divert attention away from the real issues, the real questions we need to be asking. Exactly what are we getting for the tax dollar, that other valley cities are not? Show me where our programs are better and therefore more expensive, not which programs will go if these measures pass. How much better are we doing at reducing crime, issuing parking, or issuing building permits, and attracting community-friendly businesses? Example, at roughly the same staff and budget, Palm Desert's building and planning section generates over twice the revenue in building permits than does Palm Springs. Five-hundred thousand dollars for Palm Springs, one-million-one-hundred-and-fifty thousand for Palm Desert. Why is that? What is Palm Desert doing differently to account for this huge difference in revenues? Palm Springs doesn't seem to be answering these questions, or asking these questions. Instead, our ci, our city proposes to cut hours and services of the permit center if these measures pass. Why are these measures on the ballot in the first place? People are searching for ways to address inefficiencies in our city government. Neither a yes vote nor a no vote will ensure efficient government. But voting yes on U, V, W, and X will send a message that we insist on working towards more efficient government, starting now. Thank you.
Thank you, Sly. Rob? Rob Sanders?
Madam Mayor and city council staff, uh, good evening. I believe that Patricia has given you another copy of my subject, it's, uh, letters addressed to each of you regarding, uh, animal control. The request, which I understand was sent to you on September twenty-fourth, along with signatures, addresses, and phone numbers of your voters, two of whom are retired policemen, is referring to a noise ordinance, it's number ten, point-two-eight, point-zero-two-zero, especially, section C, which says, "After being informed that a violation of subsection A or B of this section may have incurred, the owner or the harbor of such an animal shall take all steps necessary to ensure that such a violation does not occur again." Please refer to your handouts for elaboration and signatures. Now, I'm several houses away from the subject of offending property owner, however, the residents have asked me to follow up the letters that they've sent in, and, uh, since I've donated time to the city, most of you probably remember me, uh, from the early days of the, uh, of your television cable operation. Having a professional commercial background, why, I donated some fifty thousand dollars of my time trying to repair and piece together inadequate equipment in those days, along with that, that time, a precarious political setup that was extremely difficult to manage, you probably remember that. Rick can verify that, as he refused to work with them. Doug Evans can tell you of the mornings when he was coming in, as I was finishing working all the previous day and all night, solving technical and production problems. But I did keep you on the cable for your meetings. Plus, I donated time to the library with Margaret Rhodes, video photographing the historic buildings for master tapes. Anyway, I only mention this hoping you'll do me a favor, and take care of the problem in our neighborhood. In this day of nine-eleven, the snipers, and the looming war with Iraq, these violations are small potatoes. However, you have citizens right here, your voters, whom some are forty-hour-a-week workers, and do need their sleep, so I ask you, please help us, even if it's only a letter of, uh, assessing a fine, and I look forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Uh, Duane?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council, uh, my name's Duane Roarball, I'm at, uh, with the Wyndham Hotel, eight-eight-eight Talkwoods Canyon Way. I'd like to talk a little bit about the, um, events this past weekend, the Rocktoberfest events. Um, I certainly appreciate the efforts of the Palm Springs Bureau of Tourism to be able to put such an event together and at such a short notice. I personally went there, one afternoon and two evenings with my family, thought it was a great event, everybody seemed to have, have enjoyed themselves. Uh, however, in speaking to my counterparts at the other large hotels, and I certainly echo the, the same as they do, um, our hotel occupancies were far less than it was same time last year. As everybody knows, last year, we had the biker weekend. Um, each of us said that, um, we essentially had no walk-in business in our bars and restaurants, and it, uh, certainly concerns us. We'd like you to, um, consider bringing back biker weekend, if so, if not in October, then we should look at doing something in September, when it's still very difficult to get business to come to the desert. So, if we can be proactive, uh, in inviting them back, I think that it would certainly serve the city and the community, and also the businesses in Palm Springs. Thank you.
Thank you, Duane.
Counsel, uh, here. My name is Dr. Scott Gregory, I'm a doctor of oriental medicine, and I, um, am a writer, um, publisher, author. Unfortunately, I had been a victim, I was involved in nine-eleven, and my publishing company was destroyed. And I came here to Palm Springs practically homeless, because every, I lost everything. And I wasn't about to ask the government, because they had enough money that they had to dole out to people, deaths, and so many other situations. So, I took a job here as a taxi driver, and I'm a taxi driver for Sunline, city of Palm Springs. And we're having some problems at the airport, and I'd like to, uh, I'd like to mention some of them. Basically, uh, the speed problem, uh, twenty miles an hour is, uh, most people don't realize that's the speed limit at the airport, and it's causing problems because, um, uh, well, I monitored about, uh, in one hour, about sixty cars, and fifty of them were ten miles and more over the speed limit. So, I have some suggestions, one is possibly installing a flashing yellow light in the crosswalk, um, or speed bumps. Another thing that could possibly be done is to put up more twenty-mile-an-hour posted signs, I only saw two, as you enter and as you exit. Um, I talked to an officer, a police officer, because I wanted to give him this, uh, statistics, um, and he stated that they can't sight, uh, drivers, because the distance is not long enough from the beginning of the airport to the end, so they can't use a radar gun, and that, um, pedestrian, um, uh, crosswalking is, is legal, because for a similar reason, the, the walkway does not meet certain specifications, and because it is an airport, people can cross. Well, what's happening is, on one side, you have permit parking, on, and, uh, on the other side, you have the taxi parking, and then in the, on the opposite, the, um, res, appointments or permit parking, there's another line, which is also occupied. So, the pedestrian that goes out the crosswalk, on both sides, there's cars he can't see. So, something needs to be done, one about the speed, and secondly, about this blind intersection. And I talked to several of, uh, individuals that were, uh, involved in, uh, rental cars and so forth, and they told me that, more than once, they almost lost their lives. So, I'm bringing this forth, um, I thought it was an airport problem, and I found out from the officer that it's a Palm Springs problem. So, that's why I brought it forth, and the reason I'm in-
Thank you, Doctor. Anyone else that would like to speak? All right, seeing no one, we will close public comments.
Madam Mayor, uh, would you-
Do you want to speak?
If I may, uh, I, I would just like, just to make one observation, and again, this is just a factual observation, uh, there's been questioned about the efficiency of our government services vis-à-vis or compared to other cities. Just, just please note, I would just like to make one simple comparison. For example, of course, we have more police officers, for example, I have eight additional police officers at the airport, that no other valley city has. The taxpayers of this city do not pay for those eight police officers, the airport does, and the federal government, that needs to be taken into, into account. Additionally, we pay two million a year for the library, Palm Desert doesn't have a library. So, it's just those kinds of things that need to be taken into consideration when you're doing the comparison, and I would open my door and the door of the city finance director to anyone in this community who wants to go step by step, and we will explain it, and I will tell you I take very seriously my obligation to run this government efficiently, and we do so. So, anyone who wants to call me, and if I could ask our engineer in the camera room to put up the phone number at city hall, of the city manager, and of the finance director, we will meet you day, night, and be happy, in a very factual way, just give you the numbers. So, please, take me up on that call, I look forward to hearing from you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ready, for, for answering that question, because I think that-
Absolutely.
-that was important, that was something I had written down and was gonna ask, so I'm glad that you brought it up. All right, moving back to the consent agenda. I have two abstentions to make, on warrant nine-eight-zero-six-six-two, and nine-eight-zero-eight-zero-zero, both husband-related.
Madam Mayor?
Any, yes? Mills?
Um, I've got a correction on the minutes in item one.
Okay.
Could refer to, um, October second, page four, item fourteen, uh, the third paragraph from the bottom. It, uh, the, next to the last sentence, or line, states that a plaster weight and paint could be used, that the word, uh, I'm, I think, was that a plaster parapet. So, if weight could be changed to parapet, then I think it makes more sense to me.
I'm glad you clarified that.
You know, I thought that too.
You thought that too?
Well, I knew if I didn't, you would.
Yeah.
And I will be abstaining on number nine, business-related, and abstaining on one warrant on twelve, number nine-eight-o-six-seven-one, business-related.
All right. Any other abstentions or separate votes?
I will move the consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Madam Mayor?
Aye. All right, with that, we will move on to item thirteen, which is our first public hearing. It is an appeal, case number three-point-two-one-nine-eight, uh, two-thirty-one Oasis Road, uh, staff report, please.
Um, Madam Mayor, I would ask, uh, Mr. Evans to give the report on this agenda hearing, thank you.
Thank you.
At your last meeting, uh, Madam Mayor, members of the city council staff gave you an overview of the staff report, an overview of the plans, you have that same written report in your agenda packet this evening. Uh, this is an item, a council member, a review of a proposed project located, um, on Oasis Road, the building is set back from Oasis Road, it's a metal building, uh, the issue that was, uh, brought up was whether or not a metal building is an appropriate, uh, building material type. Uh, the planning commission approval required that this, uh, at this level, all the way across and wrapping around the building, about here, that this area be a decorative masonry material, to make the building look like it sets on a masonry structure. We gave you an overview of some of the buildings, uh, in the area, uh, one of the ones that I think we added since the last meeting is the Desert Fountain and Gas, uh, building, it was an all-metal building that has a stucco exterior, and a lot of architectural and design embellishments added to it. It's located, uh, on Indian Canyon Drive, at Radio Road, and then we gave you some overview of photographs elsewhere in town. Uh, that completes our report, uh, the council has the option of upholding the planning commission, uh, decision, overturning the planning commission decision, or modifying the planning commission decision, and staff will certainly help the council on how to formulate a, a motion, if that's your pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Counsel? Counsel? It's a hearing. You're right. Thank you, Dana. Public hearing. Anyone that would like to speak on this subject? You have five minutes. Please come up to the mic. No one? All right. I'll close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
This is the issue where we had requested the applicant to come before us in his defense. Do we know... Was there any correspondence?
Yes, Councilmember Oden. We... I personally called the applicant, who is the project designer. He was aware of the meeting last time and chose not to come to the meeting. There was a little bit of a mix-up on where the staff report was sent with the address, but my staff did talk to him before the meeting, and he acknowledged that he knew when the meeting was. We did resend out the staff report and the notice to the project designer and the owner of the property. So they're both aware of tonight's meeting. I'm not aware of whether or not they intended to come or not, but I do know that they were noticed of the meeting, and I did talk to the applicant right after the last meeting.
Madam Mayor. I did speak to the owner of the project today and also to the applicant. And I really explained to them pretty much what I explained at our last meeting, and made a suggestion how I felt I could very easily solve what the concern was I had, and that more than likely, it would certainly not be any more expense than what the conditions were at planning commission, and presumably less. And I did talk to, as I mentioned, to the designer on the project. He felt, as I did, I suggested to Mr. Cornish, the owner, that I was going to make a recommendation tonight that the project be... That the planning commission decision be overturned, and that we suggested we send it back to planning commission for review of the architecture, particularly the front elevation, and that I told Mr. Cornish and Mr. Reymuth, the designer, that I would be more than happy to meet with them and show them my concerns. And they both were amenable. Mr. Reymuth had planned on coming, and he decided he wouldn't. Mr. Cornish was out of town and said he could not have attended anyway. So with that, I would like to move that we overrule the planning commission... Doug, stop me if I do this wrong. Overrule the planning commission and send the item back to planning commission for restudy on the exterior elevation, meaning the north.
Madam Mayor.
I think it's okay to have the recommendation. I think I am uncomfortable with a council member directing someone how to do their project. I certainly agree with the information. I would just prefer if someone from the planning department or from the planning commission handled those recommendations from this point or from that point, because I think it sends the wrong message about our job and responsibility.
And I don't have a problem with that at all, and perhaps my... I think Mr. Evans knows exactly what I'm talking about. And I think my effort was more to help than to anything else.
And I certainly agree with that.
Okay, and that's fine.
My concern is that we have... And I respect what you're saying, Mr. Mills, that we want to be consistent in the message that we send to developers when they come here. But when you have a planning commission that approves at a 7:00, that too sends a very confusing message. So we need to make sure that our ordinances are straightforward in the beginning so that we don't have this mixed message, because that's part of what we're hearing tonight in public comments, and when we're out there and we're hearing people talk about what's going on, it's what message are we sending? And I think we need to be clear.
Madam Mayor, I certainly agree with that, and I think the effort that's going on right now in revising the design review is a very strong effort towards that end, and will help solve that problem. Where those types of issues would be handled at that level and not necessarily at a planning commission level. And it's certainly an issue that should be handled at an architectural review level. So just give us a little time here.
Well, I think it's more of the developers out there. He may say, you know, sure, I'm amenable, and I'm willing to sit down and talk, but he walks away with bad taste in his mouth, and, you know, that's not the message I think we should be sending. But I do believe we need to be consistent. I mean, it isn't fair that Desert Fountain has to have stucco instead of a metal building, and yet this... It's just... It's not right. All right. Did we get a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item 14. Tentative track map, 298886, Preserve Golf Company. Staff report, please.
Madam Chairman, I would ask Doug Evans to discuss the hearing on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is an item that went to your planning commission on October 9th, and by a six-zero vote, we had one member absent. The planning commission recommended that the city council adopt a mitigated negative declaration and approve the map with conditions. The project is located at the former Kohler Estate for people in the neighborhood. It's a piece of property approximately eighteen acres that is up against the hillside at the southwest corner of Via Montevista and Crescent Drive. The zoning of the property is R1B, which is a single-family residential zone, 15,000-square-foot lot. The planning commission at its meeting held a public hearing. I'm very pleased to tell the council that at the public hearing, the applicant had some concerns about the recommendations. I believe most of those were resolved at the commission meeting, and in your report, we identified which ones were changed. There was one issue that the city engineer and the city attorney discussed today, having to do with drainage fees. And I know the applicant got an update, so during the public hearing, if the applicant is still concerned about that issue, we expect that the issue will be raised, and Dave Barakian will then summarize the issue. I think the notable issue on this project is the applicant held a public meeting with the neighborhood, the Holiday Inn Hotel. It was well-attended. Everybody showed up. They looked at the plan. They asked a lot of questions at the public hearing. No community members came and spoke on the project, which means most of the issues were resolved. From the standpoint of the project, let me go over the plan. It's a fairly straightforward, single-family subdivision.
Thank you.
Every once in a while, this aerial photograph works really well for a project. The project is located, as I indicated, the former Kohler Estate, which is the large house at this location. You can see the proposed subdivision site is outlined in green. That's the former little pitch-and-putt golf course that Mr. Kohler built in his backyard. That's the area of the subdivision. Subdivision also includes setting aside the hillside portion of the project, which is here, into conservation easement or actual dedication to the city, as one of the requirements of the subdivision. So we're pleased to report the city will add to its inventory of public and open space within the Santa Sino Mountains. And as the council knows, the city's worked very hard to acquire almost 3,000 acres in the Santa Sino and Santa Rosa Mountains. Project, again, is at Crescent Drive, Via Montevista. Project has a private roadway with cul-de-sacs servicing all of the lots. These lots in this location are going to be essentially flatland lots. Some of the lots back in this area start to step up the hillside and will have to be processed under the Hillside Development Ordinance, Architectural Approval Ordinance. There is a no-build-or-encroachment line along the toe of the slope, so that there can't be any development at all above that line. And again, a conservation easement on this portion of the property, an actual conservation lot on this portion of the property. And the former Kohler Estate would be on one fairly lot, which is Lot 10, and it would be used for single-family residential purposes. That completes our report. I certainly try to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Counsel, you have any questions before I open the public hearing?
Yes. Madam Mayor, just interested in the amount of the dedication to open space.
Lot 18 is 4.89 acres, and I'd have to look in the staff report. I think this conservation easement area is a little over three acres, but let me double-check that figure.
Okay. And do you know by any chance what that makes our overall dedication?
In the city?
Yes.
It's just under 3,000 acres of lands the city has either purchased, traded for, or had dedicated.
All right. With that, I will open the public hearing. Anyone that would like to speak in regard to this matter, please step forward. You have five minutes. Hello there, Mr. Sandborn.
Good evening. How are you all tonight? John Sandborn, Sandborn A&amp;E, representing the developer. We concur with the planning commission. We had a very good meeting, ironed out a few little kinks, got them all worked out. And thanks to Doug and the staff and Dave Barakian, I think we got a great project. And the drainage issue, I think, was solved today, and we'd like to move forward. Any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
What happened to the golf course?
It's gone away.
There you go. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, I will close the public hearing. Counsel?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I have one question. I watched the tape from the planning commission, and this was a far shorter presentation than you gave to the planning commission.
It's a far shorter report than the other last time we were here on this, too.
In reference to the hillside, potential partially hillside ones here, there's something that the foundations will not be any higher than the foundations of the ones that are presently up there. Is that... Am I reading it correctly?
Those are the lots that back up to the existing homes.
Uh-huh.
That they will not be any higher than... Is that correct, Doug? How that finally worked out?
The height of the whole building?
No, the pad cannot be any higher than the pad that's behind them.
Okay.
And we don't see any problem with that at all.
Okay. So the home could not be any higher than the ones that are already there?
I don't know what the roof heights are on the adjacent homes, but the homes, whatever building there, will meet current ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
If you would like me to answer the question, the... Most of this neighborhood was built at a time when the city's height limit was about 16 feet for a single-family residential building. So most of those homes are probably right around 15 feet, six inches to 16 feet. The current ordinance for single-family residential does allow an 18-foot-high structure. So in theory, depending on the pad height, if it was exactly the same pad height and somebody built an 18-foot-high structure, it may be a foot and a half to two feet taller. One of the issues the commission discussed and the staff is concerned about right now, the grade of the subject property is a little bit below the existing pads. And what we wanted to make sure was that the property grade isn't brought up to the point where it's higher, and we told the planning commission that the planning staff would really try to keep those pads as reasonably low as possible and still maintain drainage and all the things you need for a building pad.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel?
I'll move the resolution.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You have a project. All right. Public hearing, state and federal, local law enforcement block grant. Counsel, or, excuse me, staff report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'm pleased to have you force this evening the hearing on acceptance of a federal grant. This is a grant that will allow us to buy equipment that will serve our community with a very small match. Actually, the grant is $117,000. Our match will be approximately $13,000. What we are suggesting that this grant money be used for, however, I would note that this list of items, the money may not go for all of them. It may go more for one than the other, but we have to list them as the possibilities. So again, the resources are not so much that we can do everything, but these are some of the possibilities. One is the LiveScan fingerprint system. This is the newer technology, which will allow us, in essence, to be online, to do everything from our, potentially our recreation folks to our new police officers. We also will be able to use that. We envision set up at the leisure center to do fingerprinting for the community, those people who need fingerprints. It will be a revenue center for the city in addition to serving our internal needs. So we would envision that. Also, a pilot vehicle-mounted camera in the police cars, potentially one or two may be done as a pilot. As you know, many police departments have those now, which is both for the safety and benefit of the officer and the citizens. Third, potentially any mobile data communication system and infrastructure that will assist us in maintaining our in-car mobile data terminals. And finally, potentially, it could be used for computers to support that operation. And with that, Madam Mayor, we would recommend approval, and I turn it back over to you for the hearing. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. With that, I will open up the public hearing. Anyone that wishes to speak on this subject? You have five minutes. Please come up to the mic. Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. I will say that I had talked to David about a year and a half ago about the LiveScan. Every healthcare professional has to be fingerprinted, and you get your fingerprints, and it can take weeks, months before you get them back. And this is a quick turnaround. I think it's a great thing. I wish we'd have done it a year and a half ago. I do believe it is going to be a good source of revenue, and it's something that this community needs.
I'll move the minute order.
Madam Mayor, may I ask?
Yes.
Could we just have an accounting of the asset forfeiture account? How much is in it? It doesn't have to be tonight. You can do it, you know. We just keep taking this money out of the asset, and I just wondered how much money was in it.
Yes, I'll supply that to council in report form by next week. Thank you.
All right. It's been moved and seconded, and roll call, please.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, I didn't get the... Who moved and who seconded?
Mr. Oden and Mr. Mills.
Thank you, Ms. Hodges.
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Madam Mayor?
Aye. All right. That is the end of our public hearings. Counsel comments, announcements, or inter-agency reports? Counsel?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Oden.
I'd just like to, first of all, say congratulations to several different people for different things. To Mark Anton and Jim Richardson for a marvelous party that they held in Las Palmas this weekend. I was unable to attend but to Anna and Kurt Haxstrom when they had their opening, the Plaza Racket Club, and to Andy Linsky, who was recently elected to the National Board for the Human Rights Campaign, and to Jeff Coors, who is now the executive director for CAPE, which is California Alliance for Pride and Equality, who is also a Palm Springs resident, including Andy as well. for Pride and Equality, who is also a Palm Springs resident, including Andy as well. I attended the Hispanic Film Festival opening. Let's say congratulations to Ann and Al, who are the promoters, to the Out on Film closing. And they certainly did a great job as well. And to the Caballeros, who had an excellent program. And to Resort Host, which is a new program, which will be airing in Palm Springs and in Santa Barbara, airing five times a week. And it debuts, basically featuring different activities from Palm Springs. And the host is Judith Chapman, and the producer is Amanda Smith. And it was really an outstanding, the first presentation was just outstanding. So, appreciative for what they're doing for our community in terms of tourism. I had the opportunity to attend Rocktoberfest, and I think it's a very good event. I do not, however, see it as a replacement for Biker Weekend. However, I would say that we have groups like, if we could merge this with other activities in the community, I think in a couple of weeks, we have a Tiki Weekend, which is a theme, really kind of dealing with modernist architecture in the city. If we could kind of merge the two concepts and make it like a time-period theme with the architecture, movies, and with the music, I think it's something that we could really do in a marvelous way in this community. But I'd like to say thank you to our Bureau of Tourism. I think they did a great job considering the amount of time that they had. And I think it's something that we can work with, but once again, not as a replacement for Biker Weekend. I'd like to say a special congratulations to Dana Hodges, who was inducted into the, she received a Hall of Fame Award at the Rainbow Foundation Award on Saturday evening. And I also attended the Desert Age Project, La Damned, what did they do this time? The Spy Who Shagged Me or something? And it was, it was very good. And they have raised to date over half a million dollars for the Desert Age Project. And a couple of announcements, there'll be a special star dedication on Saturday, the 19th, at 3:00 PM, near Arenas and Palm Canyon for Rock Hudson and for George Nader. And the Sunny Bono Concourse dedication, October 22nd. And an anniversary, I think the 20th anniversary, for the Coachella Valley Housing Coalition. We know the work that they have done, not only in the city of Palm Springs, but throughout the Coachella Valley. And just like to say, special congratulations to them. And it will be on October 26th, and they're celebrating at Devane's.
That's all?
That's all.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Oden. Anyone else?
I would like to say that on Monday, I attended the funeral of Peggy Stiles, the wife of John Stiles, who has been very active in this community for many, many years. There was such an outpouring of love there. Peggy was a teacher, and there were students there, and it was, it was a very sad affair, for sure. And I just want to extend our sympathy to the Stiles family. All right, moving right along.
And today is Boss's Day, so...
You got me something?
No. No, I was wondering if you had me something. I mean, I've got something everywhere else, nothing here.
Anyway, like I was saying, moving right along here to the legislative action, the administrative appeals fee waiver.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of counsel. This measures before you to respond to an issue that if an indigent individual has a particular issue with a city process regulation, they may not be able to afford the appeal fee. The city clerk has brought that to our attention and asked this to be placed before the council, and I would ask her to make some comments. Also, I believe the city attorney may want to weigh in on this measure as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, the reason this is before you is because we did have an appellate come to file an administrative appeal. The appellate does, is indigent, says she's indigent, and is willing to produce evidence that she is indigent. She has, the appeal is based on a case on a, am I allowed to say what the case is? On a vicious dog. And currently, the dog is being held at the Animal Control Center. In order to move ahead with the appeal, I have no way to waive the fees unless the council sets some kind of guidelines for us to follow.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
So, this issue is brought to us because of this particular situation, correct?
Could I comment on that?
Yes.
Evidently, when the Board of Administrative Appeals was considering the issue of the appeals ordinance, they felt that there probably should be some sort of an exemption for people that were indigent. When the fee resolution was brought to you, included in the materials that came to the city council, were the materials concerning this waiver? When we go back and review the minutes of that meeting, it does not appear that the council acted on the waiver issue, but we can't really be sure because it's, the minutes don't reflect any action. But it was a part of the request that staff was making, the staff report.
What was the date of that meeting?
It was in 1995, May 16th.
So, possibly, possibly the council did intend that there be a waiver, but we just don't have a clear record of it. As to your question about, does it apply just to this one specific situation? In our discussion of this, for example, the planning department, there, we don't have a, a general waiver process based on indigency. For example, on the utility tax, we have provisions for a low-income exemption. We don't have a similar sort of procedure in terms of appeals. I think at a staff level, as we've talked to the planning department and, and obviously the Board of Administrative Appeals, it seems like potentially, there is a broader need for some type of an exemption that would go beyond just the administrative appeals. We don't really have a procedure to recommend tonight to deal with all of the situations that may arise. What we would like tonight, if you are comfortable with the concept that such an exemption should exist, then with respect to the particular matter before us now, we would probably apply the criteria that the Board of Administrative Appeals originally recommended in judging that specific case, if the council's comfortable with that. Moreover, we would intend, in a month or so, to come back with a broader recommendation dealing with our other procedures, so that we create a comprehensive policy and are consistent with respect to all of our procedures.
Madam Mayor? I am comfortable addressing this situation on an individual basis at this time and bringing the issue back to us in the future for us to look at for a waiver program that's broad-based that covers all of our boards, commissions, and departments.
I don't think someone should be denied their legal process because they can't afford it.
Because they're homeless.
Yeah, I mean, we felt that, again, the charge involving the dog is a vicious dog, but that hasn't been evaluated yet. There's a process, and it seems if somebody's truly indigent to destroy their dog without them really being able to have an appeal process, does not seem appropriate.
So, I'll make a motion to that effect.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Madam Mayor?
Aye. Number 17, additional legislative items. Mr. Ready?
There are none.
Any added starters?
There are none.
Reports or requests? Counsel reports or requests?
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I just would like to mention, I did attend the senior center board meeting yesterday at, at their request to discuss Measure U with them, and I did, and as did city staff. And that's it.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I had made a request a few weeks ago about the monitor at the airport for the taxis, and I'd like to know if we have a response to that.
Councilman Oden, I'd like Al Smoot to respond in the affirmative. He can give you the details. Thank you.
In that case, I'll respond in the affirmative. Yes, Mr. Oden, we have been working on that problem, and as of yesterday, about 5:00, the monitor was installed and is operating. We got the individual out from New York to help us get it hooked up. And with any kind of luck, by the end of the month, we'll actually have a payphone out there operating also.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Ready, I would like to make sure that Dr. Alexander's issue in regard to the, the speed bumps and, that he was talking about at the airport, be, that he, that that be dealt with, so that he has an answer to that. And also, Mr. Betts and Sly had both talked about the comparison of Palm Desert and Palm Springs. I'd like you to get back to them, you know, to, to respond to their, the questions that they asked tonight, please. Okay, Village Fest jeweler appointment. We have one person that has applied for the Village Fest jeweler, and that's Wendy Bucic Cone.
I thought there were two others. There was supposed to be interviews.
They both withdrew.
Oh, okay.
They both withdrew. So, I would like to make a motion that Wendy be placed on that board.
I'll second, second that nomination.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
So, if you'd notify Wendy Bucic Cone that she is now the jeweler appointment on the Village Fest board, that would be great. The subcommittee appointment for the convention center architectural interviews, Mr. Ready?
Thank you. Madam Mayor, it's a request that we could get a subcommittee of the city council. We're to the point now where we have narrowed down the architects through an RFQ process, I believe, to five, and it's now time to make the selection. This is a very important decision, and we would request a subcommittee to help us on the interviews of those five finalists. We suggest the time commitment could probably be three-quarters of a day, at least five hours, and we'd request to. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. And I believe that there are three of us that could participate in this. Is that correct?
Yes. Actually, anyone can participate in this.
Any of us can participate?
It's a selection of the architect.
Okay.
I'd like to volunteer.
Mr. Mills would like to volunteer. Are there any other anxious volunteers?
Madam Mayor, if I could add, we're looking at the 7th or 8th of November as possible dates.
7th or 8th of November.
I might also suggest that the mayor may be interested in that as well. Not that I would ever volunteer him for anything. The 8th is better for me, but I could work around either, either one, so.
All right. So, Mr. Oden or Ms. Hodges, are you beating down the door to do this? Okay, so this will be Will's, we'll get back at him for not coming to the meeting tonight, and we'll put him on that subcommittee with, with Mr. Mills, okay? All right, the subcommittee for the Plaza Theater lease negotiations. Mr. Ready?
Madam Mayor, I would actually like to postpone this request. It appears those negotiations are going rather well. We'll be to report to city council next week and close session on the property, property negotiation, so I would like to retract this request at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any public reports or requests? Staff reports or requests?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I do need to make, let's see, just a couple notations. One, it was reported in the Press Enterprise that the city of Palm Springs crime statistics, it increased some 66% over the last year. That, in fact, was an error. It was a huge error. The reporter for the Press Enterprise substituted a 5 for a 2. They recognized the error. We pointed it out. Our actual increase was 2.7%, not 66%. They wrote a retraction, but of course, the retraction's...
Was very small.
Slightly smaller than the original story. So, I did want to correct that. Second, I would like to note that the conformity report on the casino, which we are required to have complete from our staff's perspective on October 17th tomorrow, will be complete. We will forward a copy, the draft copy, to the tribe, and of course, it will be then available for public consumption as well. It'll be on file with the city clerk or the city manager's office. And finally, I would just like to note that last night, during the chamber forum, one of the participants quoted comments of mine, and however, I'm quite honored that I'm cited in a discussion. I would just note that it was slightly out of context, and I would just like to clarify it. One of the members had indicated that I had said that I indeed could run the city with fewer employees attributable to the utility tax. I would just note that the context of that remark was, of course, I could run the city based on however many employees the council told us to run it on, but it would change the level of service. And I just wanted to note the right context, that it would be a service change as well. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I remember that. The next regular meeting will be November the 6th at 7:00. The next study session will be October the 23rd at 7:00, both preceded by a closed session at 5:30. Thank you, and the meeting is adjourned at 8:27. Thank you.